We will call this meeting on the Monday, August 26th, Jamestown City Council meeting session of order. With a clerk, please call the board.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Here.
Grabman.
Here.
Peter Needham.
Here.
Renatz.
Fraser.
Falter.
Here.
Boffickleyo.
Here.
Diversa.
Russell.
Here.
And President Holes.
Here, thank you. This time I would ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invitation tonight, which will be given by the Reverend Dr. William Blair of the New Creation Summary of God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Our Father who is in heaven, holy is your name. We pray tonight for our city and for the people who live here. We pray for our leaders and the many men and women, police officers, firefighters, line utility and office workers, who daily come together and make everything work. We pray for those in this room tonight who are tasked with leading our city and the conducting of business on behalf of our citizens. We ask that they walk in unity, finding solutions to every challenge. We pray for the people of Jamestown, young and old, rich and poor, of every race and religion. That your hand be upon us for blessing, joy, peace and prosperity. We stand together in service to one another and to you. Lord, your prayers, amen.
Thank you, Reverend Blair. This time I ask for pool the minutes of the July 29th, 2024 meeting session. Some of my council members.
Second.
Do you have any messages from the mayor?
You do. Dear councilmembers, in August 2024, the city of Jamestown welcomed two new employees to its ranks. Daniel O'Brien joined the Parks Department and Joseph Palermo joined the Department of Public Works. I kindly request that we acknowledge and extend a warm welcome to our new hires during the upcoming August 26th, 2024 City Council meeting. Very truly yours, Kimberly May Apple.
That's it from the mayor? Okay, move on. At this time, we give opportunities for persons to address the city council if you'd like to address the council. You can come up to either one of the side mics, give your name and address, and limit your remarks to five minutes. Anyone who would like to address the council, please step up.
Hi, my name is Kim Mason. Hi, I'm Kim Mason. My husband is James Mason. I'm here representing him. It's in reference to how he felt about the food trucks. He said that it wasn't something that he was interested in. It took away from what a restaurant really is all about. It's like a squatter outside of your business trying to take your business. They have a cash basis and that can disappear. And they can do an LLC and it's not the same name as what is on their truck. There's a lot of illegal things going on here with these food trucks. And I'm here to represent him. It's very important to me and close to my head. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else who would like to address the council?
My name is Tom and Dolores. I am at 11 West 8th Street, Jamestown, New York. I've prepared speech. I only have five minutes to speak, so I'm requesting the council not interrupt me. I'm here tonight to talk about the First Amendment and the apparent mission of this administration to trample on our rights. This mayor's desire to shut down the public free speech is un-American. At last week's meeting, you trampled all of the First Amendment rights of a citizen who took time from his life to come in front of this council. Instead of giving him his five minutes, some of you rudely and viciously interrupted him repeatedly. Some of the Republicans on this council, the mayor, the director of development, became a defensive pack of wild dogs that attacked this citizen. He only used the F-word out of frustration because you would not let him speak. And so what if he went over his five minutes? So what if you had to give him two minutes extra time to finish? You shut him down. Cursing is protected speech. The word phrase used last week is speech I would not use in the public forum. But I'm going to say the word now, and you are going to sit there and you are going to say nothing. Because if you stop me and you ask me to sit down, I will file a lawsuit against the city tomorrow. So get ready, Chief Jackson, prepare the room. Council members, you can clutch at your pearls and gasp, but you cannot stop me. Fuck. Comments on the official city of Jamestown.
I'd like to say you're an asshole.
Were turned on for the four years Eddie Sankus was mayor. He took the hits because he understood it comes with the job of being mayor. We have a mayor now who is so thin-skinned that she cannot take any pushback, so she turned off the comments. That may not be illegal, but it makes the mayor look like a coward. In my opinion, this mayor and the director of the DOD are targeting people who are speaking out against them. I know because I feel they are targeting my home. My family has owned our home and taken good care of it and paid taxes on it every year since 1955. Two weeks ago, I received a letter in the mail with a pile of violations on my property. In 75 years, we never received a single violation. Now, because I have spoken out against the mayor and DOD, I have a list of violations that I have 10 days to resolve. What I want to say to the people of the city listening, if someone in this town doesn't like you, they can anonymously report you for your home for vindictive reasons. Because the complaint against me was reported anonymously, it could have been filed from anyone. It could have been from a computer in this building. It could be from a computer in the Department of Development. I urge everyone who is listening to please go to my Facebook page where we can have meaningful conversations about the city of Jamestown. The name on my page is Tom and Dolores, City of Jamestown, New York Discussion. Tom and Dolores, City of Jamestown, New York Community Discussion. Please go to my page and read what they are doing to my childhood home. There are photos of my home there. You decide for yourself if my home should be targeted in a city that is literally crumbling around us. Mr. Russell, you said last week, you called people, citizens, keyboard warriors out there who are afraid to come to the council to voice complaints in front of you. Well, I'm here, and I'm here, and I'm not afraid of you. I will be more than happy to take any questions from you or anyone else. I encourage it from any of you, bring it on. In closing, I want to say, you last week called citizens of this city bullies. But the funny thing is, bullies, they don't punch down. Or they do punch down, they don't punch up. I'm punching up. So in my opinion, that makes you the bullies. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to address the council?
I'm not going to tell you my name. You can refer to me as the keyboard warrior. I don't.
You need to give your name and address.
I have a right to privacy under the Fourth Amendment. I don't have to tell you who I am and I don't have to tell you where I live. And the last thing I want to do is tell you where I live. You sent people, someone sent city workers to his house. I'm a taxpayer in this town, okay? And I'm a keyboard warrior apparently too, all right? A couple months ago, a person, whoever manages the City of Jamestown municipal page, was on there talking in a condescending way, a very tyrannical way, saying comments such as, I'll refer to people who know what they're talking about, stuff like that, acting in a very tyrannical manner, okay? And I commented on that. And after I commented that that was inappropriate and called that person a tyrant, those comments on social media were turned off. Absolutely disgusting. In this country, we have a right to free speech. The fifth tent of the First Amendment is to the right to repress our government, okay? That's fundamental to who we are as a nation. To send somebody to his house? I'm not giving my address out. I don't trust any of you people here. I don't trust any of you guys to not send somebody to my house, to my friend's house, to... It's tyrannical. It's absolutely tyrannical. Whoever did that, you should be tired, or you should be ashamed of yourself. You're tired.
Anyone else who would like to address the council?
Can I make a comment?
I'd like to.
What's that?
Please, hold wait until here.
Okay.
Anyone else who would like to address the council?
My name is Mary Williams Deers and I reside at 173 Baker in Jamestown, New York. I am here in attendance tonight along with a row full of citizens sitting next to me. We're not here to argue or place blame on anyone or any singular entity for the issues that we are currently facing here in Jamestown, New York. Rather, we are here offering our help in discussing and finding solutions. As it stands now, everyone is approaching this topic individually rather than collectively, and we'd like to change that on a local, state and national level. This isn't a problem just for Jamestown. These are problems all over our country. As we can see from the tit-for-tat on social media and media in general, it is clear that we have lost sight on brainstorming new ideas and solutions, rather than looking to place blame, which can become the easier answer when there is no easy fix or easy solution. I'm not saying today will make a difference in finding an easy fix or an easy solution, but maybe coming to an understanding that we need to find a more long-term solution to combat the increasing numbers of our shelterless community members before snowfall. To this point, I've tried to remain neutral. As you guys well know, some of you guys know me as a missing persons advocate, some of you guys know me as an advocate for animals. Just in general, I like to be a voice for our voiceless or be a louder voice to help echo those that either cannot attend or do not know the proper channels or procedures to go through. I think we need to start with a fresh slate. I think at this point, everybody's on the defense and we are not going to accomplish anything in that manner. So I think communication is a big part in that, so that rather than sharing misinformation across social media platforms and elsewhere, we all get on the same page and are actually actively brainstorming what we can do as city leaders, city officials, community members, nonprofit organizations, to get on the same page to hopefully decrease the number of our shelterless population in Jamestown before snowfall. I'm sure most of you guys are aware that we have been previously granted $198,000 for two Code Blue shelters in the past. That happened right before winter time, and I think only one of them opened at half-capacity for half of the winter. Rather than investing in $500 cots, we need to invest in mental health and rehabilitation, work programs, as well as getting these people some form of place to start this communication. Rather than us speaking on their behalf and, you know, kind of getting on the defense of here, we need to find a platform where we can hear directly from these people and what gaps need filled the most here in Jamestown to address that. I spoke with some of the shelterless today as well as a week ago, and their main needs seem to be basic shelter, and half of it is information, knowledge, which is free. There is not a collective list of resources, shelters, everything that these people need in one area, and these different organizations are not all seeing eye to eye and no longer working together for the collective good. I know that what I wanted to ask today is, what is currently in place for this winter and what is already established in terms of Code Blue shelters? How many beds are those going to have? What other buildings in Jamestown may be plausible as a fix-up and potentially utilize it as a shelter in the future? So we're looking to our elected leaders, our city leaders and officials for direction. Where do we go from here? I know there is an upcoming community meeting. I'm skipping over a lot that I have to say because this is just so many different layers of things that need to be fit in five minutes, and I'm probably already there. I know one of our biggest concerns is public health. Rather than trying to displace all these people all at once without a tentative plan in place, I think something that would be a big attribute or asset to our community members without shelter and for those of us residing here would be port-a-potties or something to that effect so that they don't have to resort to the river. So it is our goal in opening up this discussion and platform in a more calm manner that we can decrease these numbers before snowfall. What information should I be providing these people? Are there any Code Blue shelters that we don't know about that weren't available last year opening this year? Are there any other shelters in general looking to open in the near future? I know we only have Ucan as far as I'm aware, as far as full-time, which is, it's not even around the clock. Men's shelter, we have men down in the square that I was speaking with today that have no idea what Ucan even is. There are some down there that are asking about work-to-get-back-to-work programs, where they would start. Some of them just need basic clothing. I'm not saying that for the majority, as we know in a recent survey that was taken. Many struggle with mental health, substance abuse, physical, mental disabilities, all sorts of things. I would say probably only five out of 50 that I've spoken to recently would be employable today, which means these people are going to need our support not only today, but through the entire winter. I had the privilege of chatting with one of the women that had to reside outside last year, and she has lost toes due to frostbite. And then I know we have a lot of resources available, but in that individual's case, how is she to get to St. Susan's to eat every day when she can hardly walk? Is this somebody that should really be outside? When do we step in and when are we, you know, not upholding people's human rights, but also knowing when they can no longer make safe decisions for themselves? I know we're treading a thin line, but I think that we should start with a fresh slate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bonnie Weber. I reside at 23 Lake Street, Jamestown, New York. I call before you today to speak about the homelessness. Homelessness is not the problem, it is the result of the problem. And today I want to talk to you about Teresa, because nobody's talking about Teresa, so I will. She died. While everybody's arguing and while going tit-for-tat, that was the cost of a life. She died homeless. There's been how many meetings? And I think as a city and a community, we need to provide better. People need help and are too afraid to come forward and ask for help, because when they do, it's ridiculous. It really is. And I'm very disappointed in a lot of things. A woman died. She needed help. And I'm asking all of you and everybody in this room to please change your hearts, because we have better than this. She died. She mattered, and all she needed was a little bit of help. And people don't know where to go. And it's hard to come to you guys and turn to you guys because you treat us so horribly, you know? And it's hard. It's hard to reach out and ask for help. And people, and I really hope in the near future, you guys come together as a team and start bridging these gaps, because people need a place to turn, because people are dying, and we've had too many deaths, but nobody's talking about the homeless woman that died. So please, come together, do whatever you guys got to do, but we can't have them dying. That's all I got to say. Please change your hearts and your behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Blair.
Hello, my name is Tristan Amio. I live on Garden Parkway. I'm here today.
Can you give the number on that street, please?
120. But I'm here today to stand solidarity with those people, Tom and Dolores. One thing we would like to know about is the Code Blue shelters and what is available as it stands right now before snowfall hits, and what can be done to help these people, some with active mental illness and some with active drug addiction, both, a lot, so we can decrease these numbers outside between now and when the snow hits, obviously. What are we doing as city leaders to help those people besides making it just that much harder to effectively meet in places that they conglomerate at, where they would be able to better effectively get the help and information that they're asking for? If they have to go out and search for these people that are hiding and getting scattered, it makes it all that much harder. Another issue pertaining to housing involves a part-time resident who pays full city taxes longer than I've been alive. It feels like targeting when people like Tom get cited and are threatening co-violations for otherwise a beautiful home in a neighborhood in town where entire swaths of homes could be in violation of even worse, but slum lords still get to operate family residences out of these homes. It is, is this all because he speaks critically in public about this current administration on his Facebook platform? Last thing I'll say, while we're on the subject of using political power to target individuals, there would be more in attendance with us tonight here speaking, including some that have careers in this building, that they are feared, they didn't, out of fear, out of fear that they would themselves be targeted, and things like being fired and, you know, being fired, yes. Due to their lack, or due to the fact they have been told their advocacy was too loud and they need to remain minimal in front of the center of the spotlight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address the council?
Robert Ziegler, 584 Warren Road, Gruber. I would just like to bring up a couple points. First, lack of mental health, places where mental health counseling. I have a friend, one of our homewards, living in a semi-trailer with severe, well, he was living in a semi-trailer with severe mental health issues. Instead of anybody trying to help him, like MHA, they'd rather ban him from these places than trying to give this man help. He can't even go to the Ucan, no place to go, and the Ucan's supposed to be a place for people to go with no shelter. But they banned him because they don't want to deal because he has a mental illness. There'd be people there to help with mental illness. Chautauqua County got a million dollars this year for mental health services. Where are they? There ain't really nothing here. Nobody's getting help, and this guy, you ship him up to Dunkirk. You don't want to deal with him. Instead of trying to help him, you ship him off to go let somebody else a problem. We need to help these people.
What was the condition of that motel? Will you tell them that real quick, Robert?
No.
I think that's very unfortunate.
The motel they sent him to, it's a slum, it's a slum hole. Bad bug, toilet backing up.
No sheets on the bed.
It's disgusting. And then we're sending people to a place to instead of helping them?
No soap, no shampoos, no sheets.
Excuse me, ma'am. He has the floor.
This man is all the way up to Dunkirk, and we are still helping him. The DSS is doing nothing. And then with the Code Blue shelter last year, they got $180,000. But there was people like us that fed them, bucked salt, toilet paper, everything that they should have provided. The whole time that place was open, they got one truckload of supply. The whole time it was open, we were the ones supplying everything. Why is it up to us when they got over $180,000? Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else who would like to address the council?
Some of you know me, I'm Beth Barnes. I live at 11 Hibberly Drive in Jamestown, and I hear everything everybody's saying here tonight about the homeless situation, but I don't know that necessarily the people in this room can do a lot about it. There are, there's a homeless coalition that met a week ago. There's a lot of organizations that are involved in the homeless coalition that are being given money, and it's not the city necessarily that's handing out all the money. It can be Chautauqua County. So I would suggest that maybe some complaints be filed with Chautauqua County. As far as the Facebook page, I read in the paper where people are upset because the city has ceased comments on their Facebook page, but some of the comments are terrible. They're absolutely terrible. It's people complaining, pointing fingers, but they never, they never manage to say that these people are doing a good job. They're trying to do a good job. They are elected officials. So the other thing is, if you don't like it, go and vote. Bonnie, I think that you're doing a great job, so. And everybody else here, I think you're doing the best job you can, and thank you, because I don't want to do it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's keep announcing.
I live at 27 Colfax, and please, don't send people to my house. So I grew up in this area, and I moved away for 20-something years, and I wanted nothing more than to come back home, because this is home. And when I came back, what I saw was crumbling buildings, drugs. I mean, I know that you guys have no control over that, and I know the police are trying to do everything they can with that. Addiction is a horrible battle, and unfortunately, many of my family and friends battled that. But I work with, I volunteer with, you know, the missing group, and I try to help Bonnie when I can with the homeless, and I sit here and I see a lot of things. Well, this winter, a friend of mine was working at the Code Blue shelter, and she reached out to me because my cousin was at the Code Blue shelter, and I had no idea she was there. She has MS, but she's also schizophrenic. Nobody wanted to help her. Nobody would help her. She came to that shelter, and she was fine while she was there at night, but then she was sent out on the streets first thing in the morning. She was assaulted by two men sexually and physically. She went to the hospital, the hospital's on her way, and on the paperwork, and I swear this on everything, on the paperwork, they specifically wrote, "She was homeless." That should never have happened. They sat her without treatment. Her mother passed not even a month later, and she got so sick, we couldn't understand why, and went to the hospital. And she had lesions and abrasions that were open from her assault, and they had to pack all those wounds, and they had to treat her, and they had to admit her in the hospital. Yesterday, I found out another one of my cousins, unfortunately a drug addict, is also among our unsheltered. I went looking for him last night, and I know that's not the safest thing I could have done, but as a family member, I'm concerned because I'm out here and I'm helping these people. And instead of the stigma, which it is, it's stigma, we need to stop looking at these people and saying, oh, go get a job, because that's what I see all over the place. We can't keep doing that. Some of these people can't get jobs. Some of these people would love to work. Are you going to hire somebody that can't take a shower? Are you going to hire somebody that doesn't have clean clothes or clothes that are, you know, presentable? You're not. I think we do. Like Mary said, we need a clean slate. Instead of everybody going back and forth, everybody needs to work together. Like... Like, take advantage of the volunteers out here that are willing to help. We're not asking for anybody to pay us to do it. We want to help, but it feels like every time we voice our opinions, it goes on one ear and not the other. We want to help. Um, it hurts when you see your own family out there and I would love to take people in, but I'm disabled right now. I'm barely taking care of myself. So I think that it wouldn't, it wouldn't be bad for the city to let the volunteers step in and help, you know, uh, we're willing. Take advantage of that. And I'm not saying you guys are doing bad. I'm not saying, I'm not putting the blame on you guys, but, you know, she got up and she said, you know, everybody's like putting the blame on you. It's not that. The problem is people, the different organizations aren't working together as, as one unit. It's, it's this person, you know, oh, well, that's not my department. Go to this person. Oh, that's not my problem. Go to this person. It's the same thing. It is not going to job, you know what I'm saying? Like you have a corporate office and this person says, I don't want to deal with that. Go to this person. That's their problem. I don't think it should be that way. I think we should all be a collective unit where we're all working together because it won't be that hard if everybody comes together. And I mean, like I said, I'm not blaming anybody. I try to stay neutral. These things really do affect some of us and I don't want to see, be these people out here. I, when I walked up to look for my cousin last night, there was a, a young lady and she was, I think they call it slam poetry or something, and I heard what she said when I walked up and I almost turned and walked away because she, she said something about society hates us and they judge us and this is why we hate them. And I don't, if, if we're helping them and we're showing them how we can help them and we're taking the time to talk to them and show them what they can do, I don't think they're going to view everybody that way either. I think they're looking at people the same way everybody's looking at them. It needs to stop. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, Melissa Penney, three forty-six Faulkner Street. Um, I would just like to say a couple of comments about, um, what the city has done to bring everyone together. If everyone has paid attention in the last several months, several things have been coming together because of Mayor Eklund and her team. But sometimes people don't want to see the good that's coming out. So someone shared a video from two years ago on Facebook and I watched it. And I watched Mr. Sunkist let Bonnie cry about seventeen people without heat, right? So, so I, I, I kept watching the, I kept watching the meeting and there were several things in this meeting that Mr. Sunkist said that it's, it's, it's not the responsibility of the city then to get people homes, to help the homeless. It's the city's responsibility to make sure that city's property is taken care of, correct? That's why we have police. That's why we have fire departments. That's why we have the Department of Public Works. That's why we have the Department of Development and that's why we have public safety. So I stand before you because there are good things happening and I wish people would see it. You know, there are eleven nonprofits that help the homeless in the city. That was something that came out at the homeless coalition meeting the other day. There were several people there. So if all of these nonprofits were to get together, they could really make something, right? We have nonprofits that help people with jobs. We have nonprofits that help people with housing. We have nonprofits that help people with food. So really it's no brainer, right? So if they all brought all of their services together, we have hope. And, and, and every single one of those nonprofits raised money for the homeless. So I'm not here to get on the front page of the newspaper. I'm not here to get clout. I'm not here. I'll probably be on someone's Facebook page later and I'm not about that. I'm about hoping that, excuse me, and I'm hoping that people will listen and, and know that several things are happening good. There's houses that are coming down. The city can't just make a building a, a shelter. There are shelters. There are five shelters in the city. There's a children's shelter. There's a women's shelter being built. There's a domestic violence shelter and there's a men's shelter. And last night, a gentleman that I know, that I did an interview and a testimony on, that has been living under the bridge several times and does have a drug problem, and I've become very fond of him and I check up on him every once in a while. Not going to give his name because no one needs to know who he is. But I saw him going towards the bridge and he crossed the street to go to the Ucan mission and I pulled up next to him and I said, "Good job. Thank you. Thank you for going into the Ucan and not going under the bridge because that's what it's all about, right? We want to help people. We don't want to see people living under the bridge like they have been. That's terrible. That's, that's inhumane to see people under the bridge." So I just really would like everyone in the room to just take a step, take a step back and take a deep breath and just try to see the good. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council?
My name's Tony Turdakis. I live at eight oh eight Prendergast. I'm the guy that wrote the article in the paper about blame on the homeless. Uh, let me give you a little background. Uh, I've been through all the catacombs and just about every vacant house on Fulton, Prendergast and some other blocks looking for Amber Harrington. I've been with this crew. I didn't know they were going to be here tonight, but hello. I've also been a Dattan volunteer with the American Red Cross. Every time that fire bell goes off down there, you guys may not realize it, but if there's a family displaced, chief calls the Red Cross and the Red Cross sends somebody out there two in the morning to help that family. The paperwork involved where that takes about an hour, clothes, shoes, how many, this, that, and the other thing, you get them the money and you get them a place to stay for three days. Okay? So I'm not unfamiliar with displaced people or homeless people. And I have read, you know, I know you guys want to pick me apart and I'm going to, and I'm going to lie to you to blast me, but I bred your action plan for 2024 from cover to cover. I've seen what you're supposed to do with the homeless. I've got the figures on the back from a, a CD block grant thing. Okay, you're going to spend seventy, seventy-nine thousand on that, on the homeless, seventy-nine thousand five hundred out of one million four hundred and thirty-three dollars and a hundred and, you know, it's a big amount. It amounts to about God knows what percentage that you've targeted, if you can get the money for the block grant thing, to the homeless. Okay? They've already told you about it. I've written about it in the paper. I'm not going to rehash that, but you guys need to really step up your game as far as dealing with this issue. The, the plan here has a whole list of organizations that are supposed to help you guys out. You target COI as the main uh, hub for, for the homeless. COI is dealing with a Titanic. They are in a Title VIII Titanic mode. They're going down the tube. This whole county is Title VIII and you, you, the city of Jamestown, expect them to handle everything. Can't do that. You guys have to step up and do your share. We, and if you need a volunteer, I already emailed Kim. If you need a volunteer, you know, ask me. I, I will help you. I just, uh, want to give you the opportunity to batch feedback for the article that I wrote.
Thank you.
Please bear with me. I, I can't speak very good anymore. I've had several strokes, but I'll do the best I can for you. I've lived here my entire life except the six years I was in the military.
Sir, would you please leave your name and address?
My name, my name is Keith Liddy. My address is twenty-three West Third Street Apartment, eight ten here in Jamestown, New York. Anyway, in the early seventies, my friend, my good friend Jim Mason opened up the Taco Hut and it was, he built it to be the, the most successful restaurant in this town and, and then after, after COVID, after COVID, then the, the, you know, people weren't, weren't coming to the restaurant no more and then they had, they had, they take drastic measures and shut the restaurant down temporarily, hopefully temporarily. That's the way Jim wanted it. And so, and so there, hi, his, his daughter Amber filed that she wanted to take over all his assets. Well, they went to court for that and of course, they, 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 then they, they won that case. They couldn't, she couldn't buy or sell their assets. And then, and then so he, so, so Jim, uh, Jim got, uh, some health problems and, and his, his daughter, his daughter maliciously had him sign other, other documents that, that, that was, and then other false pretenses, he got put into a hole and that's where he's at now. He is at the Warren Manor. My good friend is at the Warren Manor and he is terribly miserable and he, and he, and he, he's all against this truck real bad. He's angry about it. And I, I just want you, I think there should be an investigation into all of this because of the miscarriage of justice. My friend, since nineteen seventy-one, had built that business from the ground up from what is heart and soul and everything. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharon Donaldson. I actually live at five eighty-four Warren Road in Pittsburgh. I actually work in Jamestown. I have been a nurse for thirty years. I worked here for twelve years. I do disability claims in my office and I do CASIT, which is a drug and alcohol counseling program. I have seen such a rise in this society of people not knowing where to go. They come into our office and say, where do we go? They come to DSS and they don't know where to go. They go to DSS and then they're shipped to our office to do exam or to do drug, see if they qualify for drug and alcohol counseling. And they're homeless. They're like, where do I go? I don't have no food. The SS won't put us up in a hotel because I'm on drugs. They don't know. Everything needs to come together. They just need to be able to put, if there's eleven nonprofits that work with the homeless, then all eleven of them need to come together with the city. It's not just a city problem. It's a county problem. It's a state problem. It is a nationwide problem. We're not the only city that has this problem, but everything needs to come together. You go in and you have the council and they put notices out for the people to be out from under the bridge or on the riverwalk by a certain date, but nobody's there. COI or mental health or anybody is not there saying, hey, come to our table. We'll fill out some paperwork. We'll get some information from you and we'll go the next step to help you guys go further. It needs to be one step to the next step, to the next step with everybody involved. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Just a brief, did you want to say?
Yes, please. My name's Kim Mason and I wanted to talk on the issue of, um, the drug and alcohol problems. Um, my husband and I, we have four daughters that have drug or alcohol or both addictions. We have battled this for years, at least over twenty-five years. We have gone to counseling meetings with them. We have done everything that we could possibly do for them. Um, we've been through hell and back with them. Um, and, um, quite honestly, the hospitals, um, when they're in a rehab or detox, they don't want to deal with them. So they tell them to go color with crayons and colored pencils because they don't want to deal with them. I have never in my life been so humiliated for, for anybody for that matter. It's not right. It's not the way it should be. Um, we should be showing someone who has any addiction or any mental illness, whatever, to help them, to work with them, not to push them the way, away and, and to take away their, um, pride and who they are. They already feel bad enough as it is. They don't, they, they don't like themselves. It's pretty obvious. They don't like what they're doing. They don't want to do what they're doing. It's because it's an addiction. And until we get a hold of that and until we research that and do something about that, nothing will get done. The city is going to keep going down and down and down and it's everybody's problem. It's not just the county. It's not, it's everybody's problem, including the city. This is Jamestown. Shame on us. We're better than this. Thank you.
Okay, if you've already spoken, we're not going to continue this on that long. So if there's other people that want to speak, that's fine, but we're not going to go back and forth on that. We have business to attend to.
My name is Shelley Gonzalez. I reside at ninety-six Highland Avenue in Yount. Um, I'm not going to, I have the same complaints as everybody else in this room, so I just have a request. Is there any way that we can request a criminal justice reform task force? And it's, uh, a bunch of community members that work with you guys and our mayor and everybody comes with a plan and there's no bias and they, you know, do ride-alongs with the police and they will help with social work and what is actually needed. And I think that could really help you guys and it will help us come up with a resolution. Also, if we could request more, um, rehabs and more mental health, that'd be great too. Right now, it's probably about six months to a year to get into any type of mental health facility. We're behind. We're really behind. That's all. Thank you.
Is there anyone that hasn't spoken that would like to? Just as a point of protocol, on a new business, we will respond if you'd like to say, after we've drawn our resolutions. The council will have a chance to respond. Any questions or comments? So we'll, uh, for any presentation and communications?
Did you ask for questions?
No, we're, we're, that card is done now. We're onto our business now.
We have an official petition to the city council members. To members of the Jamestown City Council, there is a national movement underway to cut cap on quality-of-life policing methods such as making arrests for vandalism, livery, and rodering, vacancy, public intoxication, and other quality-of-life violations. As a registered voter in Jamestown, I agree, I urge you to maintain all quality-of-life policing methods. Vigorously defend these methods, support and police enforcement of quality-of-life violations, and make sure District Attorney is fully behind quality-of-life policing methods. Quality-of-life policing as well as proactive policing methods have cleaned up and maintained order in many neighborhoods in our city and helped produce more serious crime nationwide between nineteen eighty-five and twenty fifteen by over fifty percent. And this was submitted by Ms. Warren Bonbra, Donald Short, Joan Gravo, Alan Nichols, Wayne Miller, and Ms. Julie Hall.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we move on to the reports from standing committees. We'll start with our finance committee. And the first seven resolutions will be sponsored by Councilman Faulkner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing payment of the regular audit.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Pedernidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Von Figlio?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the purchase of hybrid exchange server online setup and Microsoft Office 365 services with Bright 7647 County Road 42, Victor, New York.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Pedernidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Von Figlio?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into a purchase agreement with Barnmore-Selstrom Incorporated, 1403 East Second Street, Jamestown, New York, for one winter traction package in an amount not to exceed $1,851.78.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Pedernidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Von Figlio?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to enter into an online sales agreement with EWZ Surplus for the purchase of three Motorola mobile radios in an amount not to exceed $449.97.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Pedernidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Von Figlio?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution lifting the hiring freeze to allow for the hiring of one clerk, two, in the Jamestown Police Department.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Pedernidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Von Figlio?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and deputy fire chief to execute an agreement with Chautauqua Sign Company, 2164 Allen Street Extension, Faulkner, New York, for the installation of one vehicle graphics package in an amount not to exceed $5,610.00.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Pedernidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Von Figlio?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Colliers Engineering and Design, 18 Corporate Woods Boulevard, Albany, New York, for engineering services for the inspection of three city-owned parking garages in an amount not to exceed $22,500.00.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Pedernidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Von Figlio?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
The next six resolutions will be sponsored by Councilman Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Hacked Defense Company Incorporated, 2429 West Lake River Ashland Road, provide and install a new fence with gates at the fleet maintenance building in an amount not to exceed $42,500.00.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Pedernidi?
Nate.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Von Figlio?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
We have a resolution lifting the hiring freeze, allow the hiring of one laborer in the Department of Public Works.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Pedernidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Von Figlio?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Hartpatty Concrete Excavating LLC of Jamestown, New York, for Jefferson Street reconstruction, Third Street to Fourth Street, in an amount not to exceed $83,330.00.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Pedernidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Von Figlio?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a change order number six with Building Innovation Group, 107 Lincoln Parkway, East Broad, Chester, New York, for total decrease of $1,784.00.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Pedernidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Von Figlio?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number seven with Building Innovation Group, 107 Lincoln Parkway, East Broad, Chester, New York, for total decrease of $19,790.00.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Pedernidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Von Figlio?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
And finally, I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one, Estable Construction Company Incorporated, 3712 St. Brooktown, New York, for price creep reconstruction in an amount not to exceed $25,605.00.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Pedernidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Von Figlio?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
That concludes our resolutions on finance. We do have one resolution on public safety, which will be sponsored by Chairman Russell.
Thank you, Mr. President. President, I have an ordinance establishing, establishing the mobile food vendors in and to the city of Jamestown.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
I also, Mr. President, want to bring a motion forward to amend Section 4J3 of this language. The motion is to eliminate number three under that section. Number three states fees are waived for the mobile food operators who are acting as distributors and not vendors. In other words, everyone has a mobile food truck would have to pay fees.
Thank you.
Just a point of information, the health department does the same thing. They charge, they do not charge fees, they charge fines.
Clerk, second through that.
Second.
Second by councilman, please. Clerk, please pull the council on the amendment.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Pedernidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Von Figlio?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
Clerk, please pull the council on the ordinance.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Pedernidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Von Figlio?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
President Dolezal?
Aye.
That's it for public safety, so that passes through. There's nothing in public works this evening. We have any reports of special committees? We have reports of city officers? Reports from councilmen on administrative boards? Do we have any unfinished business? Saying no, then move on to new business. We do have one resolution on a new business, and that will be sponsored, sponsored by Councilman Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. President. A resolution designated $100,000.00 in no sense in American Rescue Plan, hack, healthy network, for the purpose of funding the Jackson Taylor Park and Yount Park splashback projects.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on that?
Just a point of information, we were hopeful to get a grant from the New York State. Some of the men, that did not come through, so this is just paying off the balance of our bills.
Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please call the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
Brackman?
Aye.
Pedernidi?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Aye.
Von Figlio?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dolezal?
Aye.
That's all the resolutions we have on new business. Do we have any other new business at this point? If anybody wanted to answer any questions to...
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment now. Mr. Andalor, I don't, I don't know you, I don't dislike you, I don't know where you live. But what I do know is that no one up here turns you in. Because I personally know who turns you in. And if he, I did not give his name, but...
How do you know that?
Pardon me?
It was anonymous. How do you know that?
Because this person specifically told me. That's why.
All right.
I mean, one-on-one. And I'm not going to tell you who it is unless he says he doesn't care. But I just want to let you know that it's no one up here. I didn't ask him, he just ordered it out to leaps. Yeah, I know, so I just want you to know that everybody here, like I say, I don't know where you live.
I, I...
I just, I just took, just blaming us for that is wrong. And I just have to make a correction. Like I say, I don't dislike you, I don't know you.
I understand.
It was not us.
I have heard from other people who told me the same thing you're telling me. So I don't know who to believe.
Well, I, I know firsthand because this person let me know. And I, I think it's, it's just kind of unfortunately, you just stood up and blamed the council for it and it really wasn't anybody here.
Well, it's anonymous, it couldn't be anybody in this room.
And I was specifically, if this person doesn't care, I'll call you up and say, Mr. Andalor.
Please do.
Who it was.
Please do, yes.
All right.
Anything else?
I'll also just, in a second, when he said that, I assure you, Mr. Andalor, that no one on this council or no one in this administration is targeted. You may feel that way, you may have these, you may have these feelings of persecution and grandeur. I don't know. But I assure you that I would not tolerate you being targeted in this community by anyone on this council or this administration because it's about having morals and values and ethics. But I will say this to you because you opened the door. I think you bring some of your own problems upon yourself because I truly believe that the internet at times is evil. And yes, there are keyboard warriors. And that's why I'm not rapidly on social media.
May I respond?
No, you spoke.
No, I, I feel like I should respond. You're using something. You just called me names. Why am I not allowed to respond to you?
Because you had a chance to speak. I will speak to you after the meeting.
No, I invite this in public. This should be in public. You have no idea who turned me in. You can't sit there and say anything about who or this.
Because the same person that walked up and told him, walked up and told me when I was saying I'm majoring in one.
And I don't have, I don't have any visions of grandeur and resent you saying that. And my page is a public page where anybody is allowed to go on and give their opinion about what the city of Jamestown is, is doing. There's no feeling of grandeur. I don't think I'm any better than anyone else in the city. I just know what's going on in my life. And since you all have a big secret, you all know about this mystery person, why don't you, why don't you let me know?
No, because it's driving you nuts, right?
Of course it is.
Well, I'll tell the person to reach out to you like...
Well, I still believe it. It still could be somebody here, it could be somebody...
I assure you, like I just said.
Well, you can assure me what you want.
I will not, I would not allow anyone that's...
Well, I'm, I'm not necessarily...
...to single me out for this administration. Because it's about having moral ethics and...
Because I don't think you like me very much, and I can give the reason why, if you'd like.
That's okay. We're going to move on. Is anything else under new business? We're not going to have a debate here and go back and forth all night long.
I have a couple of things. Just a reminder for everybody, school starts next week. And I've been assured by the police chief that new markings have been put out for the schools. Trees have been trimmed by the Parks guys. And there'll be increased police patrols during school activities and school zone morning and that evening. So just for, for your thought is to mind yourselves when you're in the school zones to really slow down and protect our young people in the city. I would, I would hope we all would render that few seconds, few minutes of hurrying somewhere and taking our time to get through the school zones. So I appreciate everybody. There'll be a press release, I believe the chief's going to put it out, or the mayor. And he'll warn everybody through the news media on that. On a sad note, my old boss, Lieutenant Steve Johnson, passed away Thursday. He, seventy-eight years old, decorated marine, couple tours of Vietnam, Iraq. He was a local recruiter, recruiter here and he was one of the best lieutenants, I think, this city police department ever had. Because he let the men do their job and do their work and he'll be missed. And he was involved with the Fenton. He was a great volunteer and a historian extraordinaire, military, military. So keep, keep his family in your prayers if you would and thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Would you like to make any comments? I just want to make a couple of brief comments about the season. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming. I know there's a difficult situation going on with the homeless and there's a lot of people that are very upset about it. I think the main theme, and I do take notes from what people say, the main theme, many of you said, you know, we need to kind of, let's work together. The agencies, the city, the county, the state, comments that were made about everybody getting together, this isn't just a problem. It's a city problem. It's not a problem. It's just a county problem. It's not a problem. It's just for COI or mental health or it's everybody's problem. It's happening in Jamestown. It's in Buffalo. It's in New York City. It's in every single town, village, city, big, small, all across this country. And it's going to take a lot of work and a lot of time to try to get our arms around it. So again, one of the things that I heard tonight, you know, the temperature has been really high the last couple of weeks and everybody gets upset and makes a lot of comments and pointing fingers and I think it's time that everybody just, right down a notch. Let's see what we can do. Let's work together. And I think one of our main things would be, as someone, a couple of people brought up about what are we going to do in the next few months when the weather gets cold and we have cold blue shelters? I don't know if you wanted to address some of that. Is anybody from the staff that wants to? I know they're working on that right now as we speak. So I don't know if you wanted to, I'd like to yield some time to either the mayor or Crystal if you want to talk about what is being done and what's being worked on.
Cold blue.
Cold blue? Not to push them, but...
I'll take cold blue. So there is an organization who has, I think it's been designated, I don't know if it's officially yet, so I don't want to share the name of the organization just yet. But they have been working with the county, Mental Hygiene Department and Public Food Services to put together a cold blue shelter that would be a more permanent home for the cold blue shelter. I don't have specific details on size, location, number of beds, any of that yet. Those details are yet to be released to us, but we do know that that is being worked on. And the intention is to have all of those details confirmed and I believe to, to have them out to the public by mid-September. So, you know, I, I, we're hopeful. It was mentioned a little bit earlier that there was a meeting with the homeless coalition last week. Last week, Tuesday, there were, I'd say roughly a hundred people in the room. So I, I know not everyone here is probably aware of that, but there are definitely things in motion. There are a lot of wheels turning and organizations are working together. And so I just, I want to make sure that everyone is aware that while, yes, we can always do better with communication and coordination and collaboration, these very difficult conversations are happening. And I believe that there is an urgency that maybe didn't exist previously. So, you know, I, I, I think there's definitely more information that will be coming over the next probably several weeks. Cold blue obviously is a short-term, sort of very near-future initiative. And then there are a number of midterm solutions for some temporary housing, temporary shelter. And then there are some longer-term things that are coming online. So there are a lot of wheels in motion and, you know, we, we do appreciate all of the cooperation and coordination that we've received from the county, from all of those various agencies. And, you know, hopefully we can, we can start to see some things happening.
Thank you. Any comments?
No, I, I, I guess I need to reiterate one thing that Crystal kind of touched on is the fact that if you did attend the meeting last week, you heard from those agencies that are involved. But there's some things that the city cannot announce because they're not ours to announce. So while we may know some things, it's not that we don't want to tell the public that they're coming. It's, we can't. Our hands are tied. They're, they're funded through agencies and, and frankly, it's theirs to announce when the time comes and when they're ready. So we certainly are engaged in conversation. We're certainly asking how we can help along with the county. But one thing I do want to clarify, I keep hearing this over and over about the city misappropriating funds for homelessness. The city has received no funding for homelessness as far as I'm ever aware of. We have allocated CDBG funding, that's correct, for certain things for boys and homelessness. However, we received no funding and therefore we have not received also any funding off the state of emergency. So there has been no money received. The only thing that I am very, very grateful for and the thing that we have accomplished from that is a lot of collaboration that will continue both to address short-term and long-term.
Thank you.
I'll make one really quick clarifying point. The mayor is absolutely correct. We do not receive funding directly to address homelessness. We are a participant in the homeless coalition. We also have allocated a significant amount of our CDBG funding to the soon-to-be-open women's shelter for lead remediation. So that funding was specifically allocated for lead poisoning prevention. It was a commitment that we made a number of years ago when we had our Consolidated Action Plan. And, and that's to allocate our annual lead funding allocations. So that is going directly to a homelessness prevention initiative. In addition to that, we received an allocation of CARES Act funding, I believe it was in 2022. It was a one-time thing. It's not a regular grant that we received. We were given the opportunity to determine how to spend that funding and that is the funding that's essentially seeded or provided capital to open the two cold blue shelters in 2022.
Thank you. And just one last comment about, as at the beginning, I thanked everybody for coming. And I know sometimes meetings get tense and contentious and I just, you know, I try very well to keep things even. I want to give public the opportunity to speak and people will listen and then answer questions at the end. There's a certain protocol that I like to keep and we like to keep under the New York State NICOM rules. And in terms of difference between what we do in a work session, what we do in a voting session, and giving people a chance to speak without interruption and also giving council a chance to speak and answer questions and keeping it as much civil as possible, okay? Even if we don't agree on things, we want to have civil discourse and give people a chance to at least speak their minds and have a certain level of decorum in, in a public meeting. And one thing that, at least in nighttime here, that we've always been pretty good at, you see on the news all over the place with people in, in different cities and towns and villages where they yell and scream and fight and people get up and, and actually get in fights. And we, we don't want to have that. It doesn't, that doesn't solve any problems. It's not going to help anybody, okay? And, and this is livestreamed and it is taped and we like to keep it as civil, in a civil discourse and, and as much decorum as possible. And we respect your opinions. We invite as many people as possible to come to the meetings to speak their minds. They should have that right. They do have that right. They always have that right. Many municipalities don't even give their public a chance to speak. Many municipalities, and I think the clerk would agree with me on this, that many places across the state only give them a minute or two minutes. And we give the most, I believe it's five, the most. And so we want to give people as much chance, as much ability to speak to their elected officials as well as to the state department heads and the mayor. But also, we also want to keep a certain level of decorum. And I appreciate that. And people may come, you're more than welcome. We like to have people come. We like to hear what you got to say. We want to hear what you, what your concerns and what your comments are. So again, thank you for attending and we're always available after the meetings if you'd like to speak to us or before the meetings or we have all email accounts. We have phone numbers. We can be reached multiple different ways. And trust me, we do every day. We get tons and tons of emails and personal messages and Facebook messages and phone calls. And so we do respond to those. We will continue to do that. Thank you.
Sir, excuse me, sir, but none of you commented on what's going on with my friend Jim Mason?
We, we, I'm sorry, sir.
And also...
We don't have any...
The public needs to be aware of what, what a conspiracy is going on with my friend before he dies and then you're in manhood.
I'm sorry, sir. We have no, we have no knowledge of jurisdiction over that whatsoever. It has nothing to do with city government. I, I don't, I don't know. I can't answer that question because I don't know.
My friend doesn't want that, that truck rolling around. He's all, he's, he's furious. The ripping the signs off of this building that he still owns.
I, we, that is a first of all.
And then that truck, that, that man just discussed the truck.
As I know, sir, that's in litigation and we have no control over what happens with that. I'm sorry. I can't, I can't answer questions, sir.